I'm calling to order the Finance and Safety Committee meeting of December 20th, 2021. I'd like to start off with a roll call, please. Chief Kelly Bucy?
I am here.
Councilmember Jenny Wook?
Here.
Human Resource Director Camille Borders?
Here.
Councilmember Spencer Aversol?
Here.
Staff Michael Williams?
Here.
Okay. Okay, with that, then we'll just start, we'll get right into the meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the Retail Theft Ordinance.
Oh, okay, you're gonna jump into me. I thought we were gonna do the other one first, which is fine.
I'm just following the agenda here, chief.
Yeah, it's fine with me, so I-
Point of order, don't we have to approve the minutes of October 26th first?
I guess we can do that. Is there, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
We'll approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Next item on the agenda is new business, and it's Chief Kelly Bucy with the Retail Theft Discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And last we met, I had floated the notion of trying to spend some staff time in developing a retail theft ordinance, which was meant to close kind of gaps in, in some loss prevention policies of retailers more than anything to combat a big influx of retail theft. We've, the, the, the retail theft has gone crazy in the last year, and I'd say even more so in the last couple of months, even since we met. The difficulty in that, I hinted at during the previous presentation, but I simply cannot identify what a high-risk retail theft business would look like and do it in a fair manner. And I'll tell you what we've done in the interim, but just to review some of those points, we looked at total volume of retail sales. First of all, that data is hard for us to get. We do get sales tax revenue information, but we have to sign some sort of confidentiality agreement that we don't release that or use that in any other way. So that's out anyway, and it necessarily wouldn't be fair anyway to somebody like an art dealer or somebody who might do high volumes of retail that don't have a theft problem. So then I thought, okay, how do we distinguish types of businesses? Is there, is there a particular type? And there's not. We're getting theft from grocery stores, we're getting theft from clothing stores. Not so much jewelry stores because of their business practices, but there, there's, I can't just pick out one single industry or one or two single industries to call them high target retail theft areas. Then I thought, okay, number of police responses. And I even took a look at it on like a rolling average. Are we responding to a location, say, more than three times a month over a rolling 12-month average? And my fear there is that would simply stop stores from, from calling us, and that's not solving the real problem. The real problem is we're drawing in people from outside of Gig Harbor to commit these thefts. So we don't want to shut down the reporting of such. So then earlier I'd hinted to that police responses plus a square footage element had some validity. It wasn't absolute. Without naming specific retailers, there were some smaller, there was at least one small retailer that would have fallen in that high retail theft platform if they'd had a high square footage, but it was a very small store. So even that wasn't absolute. I just kept running into, to walls. I sat down with several people in the staff, the detectives and lieutenant too, and just tried to think outside the box and how we can identify somebody and, and come up with an ordinance that would require businesses to do certain things to be better at, at holding on to their merchandise and not attract the outside thieves. So what we did in the interim, and let me share my screen here. A moment.
Spencer, do you have a comment while he's turning the screen?
I, I will have a question, but I will wait for him to finish.
Okay, thank you. Can people see my screen?
Yes.
Got the left side, there are a little flyer that we came up with? You see the light blue? Okay, so this is a flyer, and it went with, with an accompanying letter from me to some of the merchants in the area, and we're gonna expand on it, and this has all of a sudden become fairly successful for us. As you recall, some of the loss prevention policies preclude employees from calling the police. Even if it's an obvious, like sweep in the shelves sort of, uh, uh, an incident, a lot of times the average employee, the store, the store floor employee can't call the police. Oftentimes, it's just the manager, stuff like that. So the problem with that is that the businesses face risks of identifying maybe somebody that's not shoplifting or even more so, somebody that's not shoplifting, a high-profile citizen in the, in the area, maybe a person of color that thinks they're being singled out, that's not committing a crime, things like that. So that's why they, they prevent their employees from calling. So what we've instituted is a thing called a business check, where the store, any store employee can just pick up the phone, dial 911 even, and say, hey, I'm Kelly and I work at the ABC company, I'd like a business check. And we've worked with South Sound 911 to not ask any more questions. They just say, okay, we will let the officers know, and they hang up the phone. And then, so they put out to Gig Harbor, hey, the ABC company would like a business check. And that's a signal that there's something that might be going on, we don't know that. We're not profiling anybody, we're not making contact necessarily with anybody, but we're going to be present in the area. And we already know that we've deterred many thefts already from doing that, that program. Some of our bigger theft stores have utilized this successfully. The officer will simply walk into a store or park out in front, and their lookout tips them off, or they see the officer, and they set down their merchandise and they leave the area. So we've gotten some moderate success there. So short of coming up with a full-blown retail theft ordinance, I, I don't know of another way to attack this issue. I will only leave you with one more thing, where we did have a retailer, hmm, boy, it's been about four or five years ago, that was our problem business at the time. And I met with their loss prevention people, in fact, three layers of their loss prevention people, including a assistant director from Minneapolis that came out. And after some spirited conversation, we agreed to disagree. But then I, I said, listen, if you're not going to do a better job of protecting your stuff, unless somebody's going to get hurt, unless somebody's in the process of getting hurt, we're only going to respond in a routine manner, right? No lights and siren, no all hands on deck, and we're only gonna take the report, and we're not going to do any follow-up until you make some changes. And the next day, they made those changes, and it's gotten better. So I think between the business check program that we've rolled out and maybe just me working one-on-one with some of these businesses that we know are a problem, we might be able to gain some voluntary compliance. So, long story short, I was not able to craft what I thought was a workable ordinance, to be fair to all businesses. Question, Councilmember Aversol?
Two questions in one statement. So first question, is there any kind of like landlord law that, let's say there was the owner of an apartment complex, that you knew that the landlord was aware that either criminal activity was taking place at that, at that apartment complex or, or business, whether, I, I don't know what kind of criminal activity it could be, but just you, you know that they're aware of it. Is there any way to charge a landlord? Maybe they're not, you know, like you say, a marijuana grow operation or prostitution. They're not, you know, in charge of that operation, and they're not distributing the drugs, but they're aware through electricity bills or whatever, that something criminal is taking place. Can you go after a landlord?
In some cases, some are very specific, like you mentioned prostitution. We've used that law promoting prostitution to have landlords evict tenants.
Okay.
So, and, and, but, and then also dwelling units like apartment complexes. There is a separate set of laws that allows us to say, hey, this is a high-crime hotel or, or apartment complex, and so we can invoke some things there. As far as retailers, I don't know a lot of that unless they're, you know, theft, the, the store themselves would say, yeah, we're, we're trying not to be victims, we're trying to work with you. So I don't know that, that there's an angle there. It's something for me to think about.
But if they're not calling it in, then they are in a sense accomplices, are they not?
There's no obligation that you have to report a crime to yourself. And a lot of stores will say, we don't report crimes over $20 or something like that, or under $20.
Next question, crime stoppers. Is there any way to reach out to crime stoppers, or those, any kind of organization that offers rewards for stopping crime to give incentive to these employees to, to call that non-police emergency number to report something? And in the event that, you know, a crime is, a criminal is apprehended, that employee could get a check for $100 or $200 or something.
That's an interesting notion. We did something similar when we would use juveniles to do little mini sting operations on stores to see if they would sell alcohol, and then we, we would reward the, the employee that did not sell alcohol to the minor. That's an interesting notion. I'll, I'll toss that around in my head.
Yeah, just get that in the book. So my, my final thing, statement is, I'm seeing a lot of, I'm concerned about vigilantism, and I'm seeing a lot of people who are now caught up in the story of, of these store crimes, who are going out and stopping criminals in the parking lot, parking their cars behind their cars, or trying to take their keys, or just confronting these people. And my concern is, one of these criminals is just gonna turn around and shoot somebody in our parking lot.
Very much my concern too.
So, I mean, obviously, I won't be around to deal with this anymore, but this is a problem that I think is gonna persist, and, and I think we need to, A, get out there and say, please don't confront people, you know, don't make yourself a victim. I guess do what you can, get a license plate from a safe distance or something like that, or whatever. But we should have a, something on our website or something from the chief on Facebook that just says, we appreciate you being a concerned citizen, but don't take your life in your hands with our shopping cart.
I couldn't agree more. We do weave that message in sometimes. I'll make it more prominent on some of our Facebook posts, so good, good feedback. I appreciate that.
That's all I'm done.
Councilmember Wook, you had a question?
I do. Is that happening in Gig Harbor with vigilante-ism?
Uh, we haven't had any real dramatic things. We've had, well, I've topped my head, just like a minor assault one time when somebody was confronted. But I, I think that the frustration is growing, so.
I saw, I saw a video on Facebook down in Fort Orchard of these guys who, they parked their car behind the criminal's car, and the guys had their hands full of clothing, and one of them dropped their car keys. And the person with the key f- picked up the car keys, and the criminal's like, can I have my keys back? Can I have my keys back? And I go, no. And he went walking off and everything, and he's lucky that those guys didn't have a gun.
That turned out to be a rental car, by the way, so they didn't care about walking away from it. Yeah.
So my question really is, are these folks getting more aggressive, the criminals? Because I'm reading more and more about how, well, for example, what happened on Hollycroft.
Right. Um, more audacious, maybe, more brazen is the right word, right? If you use the word aggressive, we're, we're not seeing necessarily an uptick in, like, suspect confronting somebody. We have seen a few instances in the last year of suspects carrying bear spray, and in fact, using the bear spray on a clerk in one instance.
So we've had now, what, two police cars?
Those were just-
Are those flukes or what?
Those were kind of flukes. One was a DUI coming around the corner that drifted over the center line and hit his officer, and then same officer Saturday night is just driving on Olympic Drive, and he barely hears something on the radio, but he doesn't know what's going on, and a car spins out of Olympic Village and hits him.
Oh, my gosh!
Same officer, yeah.
Same guy. Oh, that's too bad. Anyway, well, I'm glad he wasn't hurt, so. So you don't think that these criminals are getting more aggressive towards our police?
Not towards us. They're not stopping. People are running like crazy. Even routine traffic stops now, people are fleeing on almost a daily basis. So, we're just trying to hold through until January 10th when the legislature convenes again, and we hope there's some, some constructive changes.
And how long would those changes take to happen? Do you have any idea?
Well, it's a short session, and I, I know that WASPIC, the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chief, is asking for some of these changes to be effective as soon as they're passed, so.
Okay, all right. Thanks so much.
I think there's some good news and, and better news. The good news is, what you're doing with that business check seems to be working. And I would think that if their losses do come down, some of these stores might see a loss. They're gonna wonder, why, why are they coming down? So they may end up being more cooperative in the long run. But we had talked about an ordinance, and the, the, the good thing about that is, everybody hears it, everybody knows it's out there. But it, like you say, it's very problematic. So I think this is more of a police policy, no ordinance necessary. Is that correct?
And perhaps, I mean, we've done that in the past, right?
Yeah, and so I would think it, it's just good that the business check is, is working. So, good job, and good suggestion by, by you, Spencer. That was something to think about.
Yeah, a couple of good things here. We do, we've, we've authorized some holiday foot patrols. We usually do that in December where we free up just a little bit overtime, and we send out officers specifically to be on foot in our retail districts. They're gonna be carrying these flyers with them and making contact with managers and trying to promote that business check program a little bit more, so.
Real good.
Yeah.
Then we'll just close this topic, and no ordinance necessary at this time.
Unless we have some epiphany.
Yeah.
Thanks very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the OSHA report. Camille, you like to latest through this?
Sure, I'm gonna share my screen with everyone. One second. That is not working. Hold on, something's gone.
You should have privileges as a panelist. There you go.
Hey, you can see it?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, um, first of all, I'd just like to say that I took your guys' recommendation from last time we had this meeting and added additional years, so you have 2019, 2020, and 2021. Fourth quarter for 2021 is not completed yet, so a lot of the reporting for this specific quarter has not been tallied for, for 2021. So you'll see some asterisks here for, I know that two employees run light duty, that has not been totaled out for this year yet. So it says zero, but there are hours in those two boxes. Um, you'll also see that there is a downward trend from last year, but we do have some, some work to do probably in the Public Works Operations Group, and I'm gonna be working with Jeff to find out if there's something that we can come up with that will help that group out as well. So we're just gonna go through the claims real quickly. And if you have any questions as we go along, please feel free to, to raise your hand or just ask a question, that's fine too. So we did not have any, okay, go ahead, Jenny.
Yeah, so let's go back up to take a look at the days, number of days away from work at Public Works in 2020, 159, and in 2021, 40. So that's good, isn't it?
That is good, yeah. We still like to get it down a little bit more, like 2019, we only had six days for that group. So it's still a little high, but it's better than it was last year. Yes, you're correct.
So is there a, is, is there a number that we're looking at, really?
Um, I try to get it under 20 hours if we can.
All right. Thank you.
Or 20 days.
That 159 hours in 2020, was that primarily one person?
It was one person.
With a more severe injury?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Okay.
One, one severe injury, but the net result is, I'm off, great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And reported injuries is really what we're looking at. We're consistent, actually, for operations the last three years. We've had five injuries, so we wanna get that down too, see if we can get less injuries in that, in that group.
Well, this latest thing over the weekend with the police is, what's that reported injury, chief?
It will be, yes, and again, the fourth quarter totals aren't on this sheet, so yeah.
Okay, so we had zero hearing loss claims for 2021. We had one last year. That's an improvement for us. We do participate in a annual audiology testing so that we can have a baseline for all employees annually, and we can try to correct the hearing losses should that happen with hearing protection and proper hearing protection. 2021 injuries reported that led to claims, so these are the injuries that were reported to us that occurred that led to an LNI claim. So there'll be ones here shortly that did not lead to a claim. So there were no claims in Administration, Community Development Court, and Public Works Administration this year. Police had two reported so far. We'll see about this other one, chief. During the training, there was someone that was going upstairs, they missed a step causing an injury to their ankle, and there's really not anything we can do to prevent that, so we're just asking the employees to use extra caution while using the stairs. We recently had a post-traumatic stress disorder claim that is being processed currently. So we just got that the beginning of December, and we, we're not sure what it's about yet, so we'll find more information hopefully in the next couple of months about this claim. Public Works Operations, we had an employee that was drilling into a metal box, and they were using earplugs and safety glasses, but the shavings went up in their eye. They flushed their eyes immediately. We're just asking employees to use safety goggles, and so those cover the whole entire eye instead of just the safety glasses, which can go underneath there. So that was a change with the specific job duty. An employee hit a curb when they were mowing, causing back pain. They were retrained on how to use the mower in that area, I think it was on a hill. An employee lifting a motor out of a truck smashed their finger. And this happened to be, I know, a seasonal hire, so we were asking seasonal hires to make sure that they're help, having someone help them with this particular mower. Number, or letter D, an employee got, getting inside of a work truck, hit the top of their head on the door frame. So I do know from a couple of employees, they said there are stickers on the door frames, so we're just reminding people, be careful when you get in, think about what you're doing before you sit into the vehicle. Another one in Public Works was, they were falling trees, and employee was pinched between the bucket and the truck, causing injury. So supervisors asked employees not to get under machinery and to pay attention around heavy equipment. All right, so the next group are near misses and minor injuries reported. These are not found on your OSHA report, so these are accident, not accidents that happened that are reportable. So for instance, like Administration, someone was under their dra- under their desk or fixing someone's PC, and they just had a neck strain, but they didn't wanna report it. It was only for that day, wasn't like a, they didn't feel it was a big deal, they didn't wanna seek medical attention. So we reviewed proper bending techniques, and we've asked the leadership team to have employees move their PC, the towers on top of their desk and setting, instead of having them under the floor, because it's harder for the IT people to reach those items. Uh, police, there was a blood-borne pathogen exposure potentially, and so we're just asking all officers to use safety protocols. I do know that chief has purchased a variety of gloves for the police officers to minimize any potential exposures in the future. There was also a potential COVID exposure, and so in this one, there may have, somebody have said that they had COVID, and they thought they may have been exposed, but there was no, nobody got COVID from this exposure. If they had, it would have been on the other list, just so that you're aware.
They were trying to get out of going to jail.
Right. So we just asked our employees to continue wearing face masks and keep the partition closed between the patrol vehicle and the person.
Do our police, where officers wear a mask when they're on duty?
Depending on the situation, we've asked them to not wear masks on their first contact with someone because we don't want any miscommunication, right, at what could be a critical moment. But then after things are calm and stuff, they're supposed to mask up.
Okay.
So there was a traffic collision that we spoke about earlier. The employee followed all the safety protocols. They did not file an LNI claim. Public Works Operations, an employee was loading a mower on the trailer, and a place knee gave out, and we're just asking again that people get help when they're moving the mowers. So last year and this year, we've received the $10,000 maximum amount for the Stay at Work application program for the retro program. And in fact, today, I just received another check, I'm gonna give Michael here after this, but um, Retro gave us a letter today letting us know that they've closed out Retro year for 2017, and they are allocating money back to the members for 2018, because they're trying to close out 2018. And so we have a refund for a little over $5,000 for being a part of the retro program. So we're saving money in that aspect as well. Safety training for this year, we've had hearing protection program, like I stated earlier. There's a driving training that everyone needs to have, and that's every three years. Drivers abstracts, we do every three years. The new driver's clearinghouse that started last year, we're doing that annually. That's for DOT drivers only. Public Works held a flagging workshop and a first aid CPR workshop this year, as well as a confined safe space training. There's a new training that's required for the wildfire smoke safety, and we've had everyone go through that training this year, and they'll go through it next year right before the fire season starts again.
Camille, can I interject something? On the CPR and first aid, we have an officer here who's got an interest in tactical medicine. So we're sending to, to him to a variety of courses there, but along the way, we've said, we want you to get CPR and first aid instructor certified so that you can teach the whole city. So we'll get, we'll catch back up on everybody, admin and everybody.
That's great. Thank you for letting us know. And then we've had three people who were ergonomically evaluated this year by an LNI consultant. They came out, they watched the individuals work to make sure they're sitting properly, the desk and the chair and everything, so they don't have strains in their neck or a purple tunnel, those kind of things, and so we purchased some items for them as well. Anyone have any questions?
So I have a question about the future. We hear Omicron is gonna be pretty bad this winter. Are we doing anything to, for our employees to prepare them or remind them or anything like that, Camille?
Uh, we're telling people to get their booster shots. I do know that there's very few people in the city that do not have a vaccination. So we are, you know, encouraging everyone to get their vaccine if they haven't had it already. But for the most part, the people that were gonna get vaccinated have their, their vaccine, and they're getting their boosters too. And there was also, because we have 100 employees, I, I think people are following the news about the requirement, if you have 100 or more employees, that you'll have to mandatory test people who are not vaccinated and that, so we, we're gonna have to probably negotiate that with the unions as well.
And that also is for government organizations? I knew it was for, it was for businesses, but I didn't know it was for government organizations.
Yeah, we'd fall into that too.
Yeah. Well, it's, uh, well, as we all know, it's all over New York City, so I'm guessing it's coming this way soon.
Yeah. Spencer, you had a question?
Thank you, Camille. Yep, just wanna, the Omicron virus is now, they say it's mutated enough that it is transferring to rodents, uh, which is a terrible thing in itself, but I would just say that, you know, anyone finding any dead rodents or anything like that, handle those with care, they should be treated as a biological hazard now. And then also, you know, our wastewater treatment plant, stuff like that, just keeping that dry out for any kind of rodents. It's already, you know, the virus had already transmitted to deers and birds, we knew that. And of course, you believe the origins of this thing, it came from an animal. But the fact that it's in the rodent species is not a good thing at all, so FYI.
Thank you. Uh, there was, uh, thank you, Camille. There just one other thing I have on old business that's not on the agenda, and that is Councilmember- Councilmember Wu had talked about the Pierce County ordinance at our last meeting, 2021, 79, about the Fire Marshal in Pierce County being able to cancel fireworks if the dryness conditions reached a certain level. In our meeting, we had asked city administrator, I said, to look into that and talk to Director Nudson and Fire Marshal Rice. I had an email from him today and he suggested that we put that off table that until the next meeting in March. So if we can have that in the minutes, then the next committee, should none of us be on it, can, can bring that up. And get resolution to Councilmember Wu's suggestion. Is there anything else under old business or new business or anything anybody wants to chat about?
I do want to just thank Councilmember Abasol. And he's been a really good addition to our committee. He's done a great job. He brings up things that sometimes I don't think about. And I appreciate the work that he's done on this committee and I will miss him. So thank you, Councilmember Abasol.
Absolutely.
My pleasure sharing with you all. Thank you. Thanks to all the staff. And I look forward to following you guys in the future, although I won't be doing it closely, I promise.
Well, if there, if there isn't anything else, then entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll do adjourn.
Second.
Those favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, thank you very much. And if I don't see you all before Christmas, hope you have a very nice Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.